And congratulations to the United States of America. And to the public, what we stand, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. No, seven forty, I'm sorry.
Get a door with a lock.
All right. I guess I don't have to read it. So we're gonna have little audit committee training? Okay. I don't know what's gonna hap- what's supposed to happen, so I guess I will turn the meeting over to you.
I wasn't sure exactly what we wanted, exactly towards the training. What I did, what I left in front of you, a copy of, I chose to do August, and I trained one month at August. Like, I gave you that, but it was pretty basic, straightforward. It was very busy month for too much to find and follow. We can do another one more in depth at a later date by doing this through the ages to get confused into it and play the process. You know, I don't wanna say simple by fashion, but it's easy follow that. So what I did was I gave you a copy of August's treasures report, and I highlighted on it the third date, the school lunch fund, because it was always covered. And then I also gave you a copy of the one by you, the number, and to create the treasures report, and to do the documentation, and to verify everything. So you'll see there's two bank statements, the checking and the balance account. There's also a warrant summary, which is where I gathered the checking information from. If you see the data, please, the warrant, you give me the total amount. I can also run these warrant reports out in detail, which has been checked listed by warrant number. A check register, which I also use, which I gather the voids of. Outstanding checklist, and the general ledger report. There's also my cash book, which looks like a little Excel spreadsheet, and I have one of those teach bank. Basically, what I do is I keep my empty balance from the prior month. And I start this, just like you could do at home with your checkbook. There, either your register, I list my deposits, I list the checks that were on, from warrants, any transfers in and out of the general bunch of several, or school lunch funds, to the general one. I go back and forth, and make sure that at the end of the month, that the what we count is matching to that I take is less than the outstanding check. So it's really pretty much exactly what you would be doing at home with your check register, just a little bit more involved, because there's a lot more going on. The money can get tricky, if there's stuff on the last page, you want it to be stable and spot in line. So I didn't really want to, you know, get into a month that was a settlement, and I didn't want to be a major general, on the trust information we have. Those are the ones that would, you see, that might more of that activity. But basically, we can look at the one that she does, kind of like an Excel spreadsheet. There's still a little bit of checking and one for the balance account. Just as I said, this is a little more audit, because it's a big audit, and there's the deposits, the checks, the transfers, and how to run it forward. And then all this information transfers back over to the treasures report. To make sure that everything is in balance, and then balance it back to the bank statement.
My question, one of the questions I had, and other board members have questions, is when we're looking at the treasures, the actual treasures report, and things balance out between what's on the books and what the bank says we have. What else, if we were looking at this, what else should, I mean, other than that they balance out, okay, is there anything else that we, any other information we can glean from the information on the treasures report that can help us understand what the financial situation in the district is? Not really?
It depends on what it is that you're looking for. The transfers between the funds, making sure that they seem to be, you know, in balance, outstanding checks, or the... But what we, I would say more the transfer from funds between funds. Another thing, just so that you know, I just started doing this three months ago, as you all know. What I would like to do, and I think it will help you as well, is I want to bring more detail into the treasures report. Because right now, you know, you're seeing transfer from other funds to transfer to funds, and you're seeing deposits, you're seeing things generalized. But I would like to break it down, if you have the deposits that are transferred, I'd like to break them out, show them, and the transfer from funds. Break out what funds are they transferring from, not just in the general, transfer to funds, but just transfer from funds. So that it can be more specific to within each banking account, you can put a reference, oh, okay, special aid transfer to the general. I can be able to look at the general fund as the transfer from, from the special aid fund.
Right.
So I think, as I start to add more detail, I think that will help you, and I would like to be better and look for things that watch for potential issues, or, you know, things that are ironed.
Yeah. So the transfers in and the transfers out should balance?
Yes.
So, okay, 'cause I, well, we'll go back to the level of detail. My fellow board members will not be surprised that I would be happy to see further level of detail.
That's why I was talking. Out loud, 'cause everybody else is talking in their head.
But even for myself, yes, it's a little more involved, but at the end of the day, it's a check, check of balance for myself.
Yeah.
You know, I'm coming in, I'm just getting my kids, this is getting my fingers into it, I'm getting into, you know, how things are being done, and how they've been getting done for the past couple years. I'm learning as I'm going with the records and with the books, yes, I am familiar with some of this, because I was, I worked at a company, you know, I did work for almost sort of like twenty-two years, or I left about nine, ten, that years ago. And I worked, I was actually killed before I left, yeah. And then I went, I worked for Windcat, a healthcare company that I worked with, and then for about nine years, and I mean, just on the books, just only a year ago. So I worked for them, doing data, computers support, and some very different ones. So I'm just, I might put back in, learning what's going on with the books again, what changes have taken place, a lot happened over the last ten years. So as I'm doing that, I'm seeing areas that I could definitely go into more detail, and I think it will be, it will level up.
Okay. One of the questions I did have is the, I think in the current treasures report for this month, and this has happened in the past, where the payroll account runs negative on occasion. Is that okay? It just struck me as, like, we shouldn't have an account that has a negative balance.
A lot of times, it's because there's positive transit, that's mine.
Okay.
And those are things that I want to see, as I'm getting into this, how often it, you know, is in transit.
Okay. Okay.
And that's coming from the tr- unless the trust going, the trust?
Trust and agency.
Trust and agency is moving to the payroll, so there's a...
And it depends on how the wires are made, and it may look like it's running in a negative on the books, but on paper, technically, it's negative.
The money is there.
And if, if...
Yes, those are the things that I want to see.
Yeah. If the, 'cause I've noticed, and my math could be wrong, but on occasion, the transfers in and the transfers out don't balance out. Could that be something in transit that hasn't...
It's very complicated.
Okay. Does anyone else have a question?
I think that's, you just started to answer some, you know, some of my, I don't really, I can see when number is balanced, but it's what's behind them that I don't always understand. And the transfers, I see them happening, and I know that we have to approve those that are over $10,000, but...
Well, those are different transfers.
Oh, okay.
Transfers with, now, step outside of, but those are actually transfers, you see, in monetary accounts with, or with any of your funds. So that could be the general fund, you know, one supply pool of lending money to, or transferring money to another.
Okay.
Those are the, those are the transfers you are watching.
Okay, well, the, then these are...
Here are, a lot of times, what happens with the special aid funds, you get approved for grants, but they don't give you the money upfront.
I see. I see.
The special aid will start to send money, they'll borrow it from the general fund, so they'll do like a due to the front, and then when the money comes in, you get it put back over.
Okay.
The other thing that happens to a grant, money that's out of the eight months, falls back over to the general fund. That's the deposit right now, and then when it comes in, you get the transfer over.
I see. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Cam.
Anyone else?
Do you have anything?
Well, I mean, you mentioned coming back, maybe doing another one, so if we have, when we go through this stuff, if we have questions, we can maybe bring that up to next time.
I guess kind of on a, I can see. Just, I'm one of these people, just kind of break it down to me like I'm seven. So as I'm looking at your, your spreadsheet, so you're saying that July first, just kind of walking through it, July first, you started with that balance. And so using the additional information that you have, like the other things that you gave us, this shows us the exact check number that cleared through. And you are recording that and subtracting it from that balance to get the end of the month balance, or adding, if it's a deposit or if it's a debit, to get to that end of the month balance, which appears on our treasures report. That's, like, the long story short.
Correct.
Okay. Is that...
And what ends up happening with the treasures report, if you look where the school lunch fund is on the treasures report?
Sure.
That top portion where there is a receipt that says interest, transfer from other funds, grant, special aid, deposits, total, total receipt, total balance, and receipt. Then it goes into the less than, the first, and the fourth, and the way...
What am I looking at?
It's, in this case, the school lunch fund account that we have, the checking and the balance account. One for the checking, one for the balance account. These information, we added together, those two spreadsheets, added together, to summarize that top portion, which is for the school lunch fund. Just below it, so we, I highlighted where the checking account now, that breaks them down individually.
Okay. Okay. So if we have to tie these numbers, are we tying them to this spreadsheet?
Because that, there's two of those, there's the checking account and the balance account.
Right. Okay.
And...
Add them together, there's no problem.
And the wa- warrants, the term warrants, for those who may not be familiar, what does that refer to?
She has here. Total receipts or the total checks.
Those are warrants, in general, what it does, walk on them.
Okay.
General, general, the general fund. There's a warrant report that lists every single check.
This one is about.
Okay.
Summarize, right, total, five warrant numbers. Each warrant has its own number, remember, secondly. So the warrant summary you can get here. Then there's also the check register, which is just a list of all the checks, every month, and that's who's waiting for them. Those wait also, maybe you show on the warrant.
Okay.
Right. Okay.
Just, does anyone else have any additional question to digest? I have one question. Are there, and I know you've only been doing this for a few months, but given what you've seen, are there any other reports that you would want or recommend the board to see to, on a regular basis, to help understand the, you know, sort of the financial condition of the district? Or is the treasures report now...
I think the treasures report is probably, you know, it's the best summary.
Okay. Great.
All I thought, I, we'll get together, except for the example, you know, back, if you would, a little bit more, and then I said, I start to put more detail. You'll see, you'll start to see the treasures report change, and I put more detail. If you have any questions on that, even, you know, just email me, and I can respond, you know, part of the outlook is, so if you want to know any emaily question, I'm happy to respond to it. And then, as I said, I can come back and do a little bit more, back to another, and then jump into a little bit more detail. Like I said, I tried to use one that was simple, just so that you sit back and start, it's a little bit easier to follow than the general on the table, or the special aid, you go right out and you can bring that stuff all on together. It's all over, so it's, this is a little bit more, and it's not even starting.
Appreciate you coming.
Okay.
Yeah, this is, this helps. This helps. I look forward to more.
Really? Did you just say that?
Yes, I did.
I didn't pay her to say that.
I'm revealing my ignorance about some of it, so.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Eventually we'll be touched. Okay. We are now moving into our public hearing on the Cold War veteran exemption. So the action, the Board of Education will discuss the Cold War veteran exemption from real property tax for eligible veterans. Should I just read this? Okay. I mean, just, I guess, in summary, the legislature passed a law to provide a limited exemption from property taxes for Cold War veterans. We are looking at a 10% cap on, a percentage of assessed value of a home, capping at $8,000 market value. Yes. Yes. Thank you. It's not on?
It's on, but you need to speak into the mic.
Sorry, are you not hearing me? Gotcha. We're getting new microphones, by the way.
Christmas time.
As you can see, some of them died already, so we've got substitutes. So in the Cold War, veteran is someone who served between September 2nd, 1945, and December 26th, 1991, was discharged or released under honorable conditions. And so that is it in a nutshell. Does anyone on the board have any questions you want to discuss? You can make a comment.
Okay, so just, just to clarify, so everybody understands, when, of course, when you look at your taxes, you already have the, I don't want to call it a burden, but the responsibility of exemptions for military vets in your taxes. But for whatever reason, this one group had been left out of that. So World War I vets, World War II vets, Korean War vets, they were already entitled to exemptions off their property taxes. But for whatever reason, this one group had been left out. So that's why this one specific group is now being dealt with to, you know, propose that they have a tax reduction, as the other veterans have had.
Thank you.
Do we have any information as to what the impact will be in our community?
A dollar and sixty-eight.
A dollar sixty-eight.
A dollar sixty-eight for the average homeowner, would it be the increase?
Per month?
Per, per year?
Per month.
That's per year.
Per year. Okay.
It was a small group?
Yeah, that's, I suspected it would be a small group. Yeah.
Anyone? No questions, comments?
No questions?
No? Okay. So this is our public hearing, and then we're gonna come back and vote later in our general meeting. So...
All right.
The Board of Education will adjourn the public hearing and move into the regular board meeting.
Do we need to motion? So moved?
No. Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. Any questions, comments? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Board of Education accepts the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held on November 9th, 2016, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. O'Hagan. Any questions, comments, corrections? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Board of Education acknowledges the receipt of the treasures report for the month of October, 2016, as detailed in the Friday mailing.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Reed.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Coles. Any comments or questions?
No.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. I'm gonna turn the meeting over to our superintendent of schools.
Good evening, everyone. So just over two years ago, we began an initiative at our elementary schools, where we began to work with our teachers to learn a process of writing called Writer's Workshop. That process is, comes out of Teachers College, and is widely used, is really a wonderful way of teaching our kids writing. This year, we began to expand that into grade six. So as of today, we are integrating Writer's Workshop kindergarten through grade six. And anybody who has kids in any of, any of those grades, particularly in K-5, because of the amount of time we've been doing this, I know has seen a tremendous change in not only the quality of the writing and the depth of the writing, but the actual process of starting with a thought and finishing with an end product. So tonight, Mrs. Acevedo, Principal of Lennox School, is going to be sharing with all of us the Writer's Workshop model that is at our elementary schools, but she is gonna focus particularly on Lennox School. So thank you, Mrs. Acevedo.
Thank you for the opportunity to present. And it is highlights of Lennox School, and Dr. Kami actually stole my first talking point, in terms of the history, which is fine. But the, the history does involve working with the teachers. And so, I, so I didn't have to present, I'm not sure.
Is it on?
It's on, I'm gonna check, it might not be. Start with the teachers. And as I'm starting with the teachers, the professional development, as Dr. Kami had mentioned, the professional development is with the teachers. We have a set number of professional developers, they have been consistent over the last couple of years, which is excellent. And it is providing the district elementary school teachers with continuity. So they're hearing the same message from the same presenters across the board. The present, the professional developers are also meeting with the elementary school principals, to let us know what's going on in the classrooms as well. And it's also giving the principals an opportunity to share our insights from our vantage point with the professional developers. So they were looking to support the teachers in what they're doing. The professional developers are working with the children as well. They're doing coaching, as well as modeling for the teachers. So the children are getting to see who these, who these people are, that the teachers are leaving them for about an hour every once in a while. So they get to see the teachers' teachers. And so that's a good thing. The next couple of slides that I'll be presenting are really just showing the continuum from kindergarten through fifth grade, and what our writing workshop looks like. And as Dr. Kami indicated, it is a work in progress, but we're really pretty proud, K through 5, across the elementary schools, in terms of the growth that we have seen, and the continuity that we're seeing, as the children are moving up the grades. So for kindergarten, our children, there are three slides here, I hope everyone can see. The three slides that I have for kindergarten kind of shows that we're, we're looking to make sure that the children are developmentally appropriately served. So that first slide there shows a child with a crayon, and that child is coloring, which is quite appropriate for a kindergarten child to do, to get his story on paper. The paper is supportive of that, it's a large square for the child to draw that picture, and he's doing, doing what he has to do. And actually, the picture is quite sophisticated for a kindergartner. I think that shot was taken in October. The middle slide shows three children working at a table. What's significant, if you see the black underneath each of the children, that's actually their writing folder. And every child kindergarten through fifth grade has a writing folder. In the writing folder, they're holding pieces that they're currently working on. They're also holding information in terms of how to make themselves a better writer. That middle slide also shows that there are children who are working with pencils. And that child that appears to have something yellow on her forehead, to the left of that middle shot, is actually a star. She was the star student for the day, and as part of our study with works, word study, we know that our kindergarten children, and first graders particularly, are quite egotistical. And so they're learning a whole lot about their name, and it's their name, so they're interested in the letters of their name. So that last slide shows the name wall, and we do a lot of phonics and a lot of writing from that. So look to see if you can find your friend's name, and that's the sound that you'll, you know, use for CAD, or whatever it is, if you're looking to write. So moving on, we had our first grade, we had a teaching point, they were talking about a seed moment, personal narrative. It seems like very big words for a first grade group, but what the teachers are doing is saying, okay, what's some things that happened to you? What are some things that you'd like to write about? And so generate an idea, generate a list of ideas that you could possibly write on. This one little girl had a list, and that's the center picture, and then that last picture, she talked about Sesame Place, and her drive, and it was a long and boring drive, as she writes. But, but it was really quite, quite interesting, the way she's, she's using her language, the way she's structuring it. It's not perfect, but it is certainly appropriate for first grade. Moving into second grade, we have the children also, also working on narrative writing, their personal experiences. This child wrote a book, so there's the cover page now, you're seeing a difference in terms of the way they are moving with their skills. This child wrote a story about a birthday surprise. So it was the cover, she knew what she had to put on the cover, what she wanted to put on the cover. And then she had, actually, six pages of text that she wrote, which also had pictures to go along with it. And the birthday surprise was a puppy, which is a huge surprise for a seven-year-old. So it was a really nice piece of writing that she did. So in third grade, that upper shot there is really just to remind me, and to tell you as well, that all of the writing that is being done is standards-based. The Common Core Learning Standards, the New York State Common Core Learning Standards for literacy includes a ban on writing. And so the Writer's Workshop that we have in place is also aligned to the New York State Common Core Standards. So all the children know that, some may be able to articulate it, some may not, but that's okay. But our third graders are also working, and we're trying to do, actually, right now, they're working on informational text. The two shots that I selected for this, I want to speak to the differentiation that occurs. So this, both of these boys are third-grade boys, but if you look carefully at the shots, the shot on the left shows a large picture, it's a picture of a seal, and there are a couple of photo captions on there. Not a lot of text, but that's what this child can enter with, that, this is what this child can read, and this is what this child can take notes on, so that he can write a summary. It's a great appropriate, it's, it's developmentally appropriate for that child. If you look at the shot to the right, it's clear that the text is more sophisticated, and the child's writing is actually more sophisticated as well. That's what this child is able to do. So there's lots of differentiation that goes on within one classroom, as well as across the grades. In fourth grade, they're getting specific strategies, they have folders, they have mini lessons that the teachers are giving, and then saying, okay, go and try it. Here are a list of suggestions to make your writing even more interesting. I thought I knew, but now I find out. That's something that you could insert somewhere in your texts to make it even more interesting. It shows two boys kind of looking, and they're sharing what they wrote. So they have enough time to work independently, and then they have time to peer edit. Giving the kids, the children, an opportunity to kind of practice what they're learning, and we know that you get better if you teach somebody. And so that's what we're looking to do with the children as well. And so that's what we're looking to do with the children as well. That other shot with just the text shows some Post-its, and the Post-its are actually showing what children are reflecting on. So the three Post-its that this child wrote were, "Well, I chose this, I got better as a writer because I think I need to do this the next time I write." So we're encouraging our children to be self-reflective writers as well. Finally, in fifth grade, you can see the talking point is more sophisticated, we're doing strategies for generating personal narrative, there are lots of different strategies in fifth grade that is on that talking point display. You could also see that some of our fifth graders are using word processing to publish their final piece. And I went into a classroom a couple of weeks ago, a fifth-grade classroom, and I said, "Tell me, tell me about writing." And this one girl said, "Oh, okay," and ran and got two folders. She had one that had all of her structure notes in terms of things that she's learned that she can be as a writer, and then she had her actual writing. And she went through this whole quite sophisticated thing, saying that, "Well, this was my first draft, but I didn't like that, so I made a second draft. And as an author, I need to be able to do that so that I can go out to my public." And so, I need to say, I need to say that, and I need to say, and I didn't prompt her to say that, but it was certainly a rewarding comment to get, and one that needed to be shared with all of you as a thanks to having the level of continuity so that we do realize that children need to know how to write, and they are writing for an audience, whether it's an audience that will actually pay, or whether it's an audience that will just be entertained without the monetary compensation. But we do want to thank you on behalf of the staff and the students of Lennox School for the continuity of the instruction that we're able to provide to our children. So thank you.
Any, anyone have any questions? Comments?
I, I, just having a fifth grader and being able to relate to this level of sophistication in terms of writing, it's incredible what these kids are doing. And I, it just, I can't speak highly enough of what they're doing and what the staff is doing to get this out of them, because kids are capable of doing far more, I think, than we give them credit for. And it's just nice to be able to actually see that this is, you know, see that they are able to do it and being expected to do it.
I'm curious, how, we've only been doing the Writer's Workshop for a couple of years? Two years?
This is, this is going, the spring will be, have completed, going the third year.
Okay, going to, okay. I'm curious if there's any, if we've seen, if Mrs. Acevedo you've seen, or if we have any evidence of the benefits of this translating into areas outside of just the writing? Or is it too soon to really?
I don't think it's too soon, but I'll let you answer.
Sorry, need to use this mic. Benefits from the Writer's Workshop programming extending out past just the, you know, the writing, but into other subject areas or?
Oh, absolutely. In fact, the writers, the professional developers, we have science integration going on in writing as well. The focus of the science of reading, that third-grade slide that I was showing, the text that the children were working on was part of their science curriculum.
Okay.
And so that informational narrative, oh, sorry, not the narrative, informational text that you're using, which aligns with the reading and with the writing as well and the content area. So they extend that to possible to present that it may have sense, that's definitely what they're trying to do with the writing. Our young people in the late, the bells ringing away, hold your, hold your reading book like a bell, time to focus, you know, with the family, we're, we're doing work for them.
The other thing that we do is we, all of the professional developers that are working with us, they will every so often get together and make sure that everyone's on the same page, so that they're not, they're not individual people working individually, they're individual people working collectively. This year, we moved into working on doing Word work, so that the writing not only is integrating with science, but the writing is also beginning to move into reading, right? Because good readers are good writers, and good writers are good readers. So, so we've, we've moved toward doing Word study, which is a component of a balanced literacy program, and we'll continue that next year. Next year, we're also going to begin to do some more deeper work in Reader's Workshop, which is the complement at a Teachers College for Writer's Workshop. But what's beautiful about it is that the language is the same, the systems are the same, but it is, what is really tremendous, and I, there are not words, I think, to describe just how tremendous it is. When we started this two years ago, you know, we started at the beginning, but inside of three weeks, the difference in the writing of our kids was so dramatic. And not only was the writing dramatic, when you talk to our kids, our kids love to write now. You know, they can't wait to pull out those folders, and they understand the process for writing, so while they're being coached, they can almost do this on their own.
Right.
And, and you've seen the difference with your own kids?
Right, I was going to add, so I have a fourth grader, first grader, kindergartner. So my fourth grader, she didn't start out with the Writer's Workshop, so seeing my kindergartner, first grader, it's not only the fact that they are writing so well, but the passion, it's, my son does not stop writing. And he went to preschool, he didn't care for writing as much, he didn't care for reading, but he does not. Every weekend, Mrs. Piccolino gets a letter, every weekend. It just continues. And my first grader, who had it for two years, I've seen the transition, so I can, I can tell the difference from, had my fourth grader probably started, like the Writer's Workshop been in existence when she started, it would have been different based on how she's writing now. She wasn't doing it at the level that they're doing it now, so I can see the difference. And to your point, they are writing in the science, in the social studies, and honestly, in the math, because math involves a lot of explanation as to how you came about your answer, and they are able to articulate it in a way that in kindergarten and first grade to be able to do that, my husband like tutors someone, and my first grader will answer for a middle schooler. She's like, "Oh, quotient." Like she just knows certain things, so.
That was quotient, right? That's what you said, quotient.
Yes, yes. So, she knows these things exactly.
Sounded like something else. A Nazi.
So all that, enough, but yes, great program. She's in the microphone, "Quotient."
Okay. Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Acevedo.
Thank you, Mrs. Acevedo.
Continue, please.
So there's a lot going on in Baldwin. Really, really, really good, good things. I'll start, our new, newly redesigned Hastings Academy, we had a visitor, the Deputy Superintendent of Nassau BOSI's. This is a collaborative partnership between Baldwin and Nassau BOSI's. So Lydia Begley, who is the Deputy Superintendent, came for a visit. We visited all of the CTE classes, we went to Police Science, we went to the gaming class, and we spent a lot of time in the barbering class. Mr. McNella did too, as you can see. We, we have a guest coming to our barbering class tomorrow. BA Shoen is a 12:30 appointment, and I will be there with a camera. Oh, yeah. I'll be there with a camera.
A lot to work on.
Well, April wants to know.
That's true.
But the, you know, in talking, speaking with our kids, you know, just the, the level of their engagement is just, is just wonderful. It really is. So it's, you know, it's a new program for us, we have some restructuring to do, we have some tweaking to do, but I'm pleased with the degree to which our kids are really learning a skill and partaking in the, in the program. We, last week, it was last week, I was asked to go to Washington DC as part of AASA, which stands for American Association of School Administrators. I was one of 12 superintendents from around the country that was asked to engage in a conversation about, I would call it a set of standards called redefining ready, which is a kind of a method that they've put together to redefine what it means to be college, career, and life-ready. And the premise behind it is that our kids are more than a number. And so it should not be that you take a test, and that test determines whether or not you are prepared to go on to college, or go on to a career, or go on to life. And we, we spent a lot of time looking at the, their formula, and just to give you an idea of the, what is, what has been put together, defining, the proposal is that defining college-ready means that they've met either of the academic indicators that I'll read, or a standardized testing benchmark. So the academic indicators are a GPA of 2.8 out of 4.0, and at least one of the following. An AP exam of three or more, an AP course with a culminating grade of A, B, or C, a dual-credit college English or math course culminating in an A, B, or C, college development or developmental English and math culminating in A, B, and C, Algebra II with an A, B, or C, or an international baccalaureate exam of four or better. So it's a 2.8 or four, and at least one of the following, or minimums test scores in the SAT or the ACT. Career readiness, career cluster identified with two or more of the following benchmarks. Ninety percent attendance, 25 hours of community service, workplace, workplace learning experience, industry credentials, dual-credit career pathway courses, or two or more organized co-curricular activities. And then redefining ready for life is something that we're working on. We're, this is starting to take on some, some feet nationally, and there are states that are considering adopting this as their indicator of college and career-ready. There's a lot of research behind it done in prestigious universities like Harvard and Columbia, and so I'm really hopeful about this. We are planning on getting together a few more times this year, working on getting this proposal forward to the New York State Commissioner for her consideration of it. I think that when you come forward with a solution and not just a complaint, that you have a much better chance at, at making something happen. And I have to say that, you know, sometimes you get an email and you say, "Well, it was probably a math email, and you answered, and so that's how you got on there." But I was, I was actually handpicked, and Baldwin was handpicked. So it's nice for, for me and our community to be recognized at the national level as a district that really thinks about things that matter and is willing to be part of that conversation. So I'll, I'll keep you up to date as things progress there. We had a Realtors Breakfast a couple of weeks ago. It was different than the Realtors Breakfast in the past. We had 13 real estate agents from the community come. They were treated to our students playing in a jazz trio, a string trio, and a choral ensemble. They had the opportunity to hear from representatives of five, all five of our career academies. They were able to tour our high school and see all of our redefined learning spaces, and to say they were wowed would be an understatement. We are moving forward in the spring with, with something that's a brand-new initiative. We're going to have something called Baldwin Open House, and we are going to be inviting real estate agents from lots of different communities to come and see what we offer, not only as a school district, but as a community. So we're going to invite our civic association, our PTAs, our Chamber of Commerce, Alliance Club, the Rotary Club, all to have tables there. We are hoping to be able to take prospective home buyers on a tour of Baldwin, so they can see the parks that we have in our community and what Baldwin as a community has to offer. So there's more to come on that. We have some, some good news celebrating our staff and our students. Kelly McKay, who is a Meadow reading teacher, was honored at the New York State English Council as an Elementary Educator of Excellence, and that was a really nice honor for, for her. Michelle Peterson, who is our Director of Literacy, was also recognized for her work at the New York State English Council. Hot off the presses for some of our kids, Baldwin High School seniors Alan Drew and Kelsey King were selected as Baldwin's 2016-17 Nassau Zone recipients of the New York State Association of Health, Physical Education, and Dance. The award recognizes the top male and female students in a graduating class who best exemplify outstanding physical performance, scholastic ability, and leadership qualities. The students were invited to a special dinner at Crest Hall Country Club on December 12th to receive their awards. Three Baldwin faculty members were selected to share their expertise at professional development workshops with colleagues across Nassau County. Christine Benedetti presented on how to perform acapella music with elementary students. Scott Dunn worked with secondary band instructors on reading and selecting wind band repertoire at the Balanced Mind Workshop, and Regina Russo helped art teachers create ceramic...
Oak arenas.
Oak arenas for disciplinary instruction at an Art Supervisors Association workshop. The two hottest things off the press, and they are so exciting. We were just informed that the Baldwin Middle School Bruin Singers, the Baldwin Middle School Chamber Orchestra, that's a high school, Chamber Orchestra, and the High School Wind Symphony Band have been voted in as the top, among the top five organizations to be featured in the News 12 Long Island Sounds of the Season feature.
That's because I voted like a thousand times.
I know, it's being recorded.
I'm kidding.
So as we get more information on what days our groups will be featured on News 12, we will let you know. And this is the hottest off the press. Danielle Davis, who is a high school senior, has received the prestigious honor of being accepted early action to Harvard College. She plans to pursue her lifelong passion for music and the sciences. She's received the Harvard Faculty Scholarship that will cover the cost of her tuition for four straight years. She, Danielle is also currently a student at the prestigious Manhattan School of Music pre-college program. In her spare time, she's gathered, together a group of her friends at the high school, and they've created a string ensemble called Harmonic Implications. Her string ensemble performs at Baldwin School functions as well as other local school community events. So that, that was seriously like at 3 o'clock this afternoon that came out, but it really does speak to our school district and variety of offerings that our kids have the opportunity to partake in. So congratulations to our faculty and our students and our community.
I realized that I forgot to do two things. One was continuing a tradition started by Mrs. Reed last year, putting on the gear from the musical at the high school. I'm sorry, I forgot to remind you. But I forgot to read, unfortunately, there was no emergency, I forgot to read the emergency procedure, so in the case of an emergency, the...
You can't take me seriously with this.
You can't take me seriously. If you need to exit my swamp, go that way, or that way. There's your exits.
This might be a little tight.
A little tight, but why are there three of everyone? I also wanted to thank the principal and the custodial staff on the condition of the building. We had an opportunity to do an extensive tour, and this building was built in the '40s, right?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight. It looks, it's incredible. It looks, it's in great shape, so kudos. No comment. And I wanted, we want to thank the PTA for the refreshments during our executive session. I guess they got word from Steele, Steele raised the bar, Lennox, you know, met the, met the challenge, so thank you for that. Should I leave the ears on?
Yes.
No? Should I take them off? Yes? Yes? Is it? I'm gonna leave them on.
Sorry, ears on or off?
We're gonna now have comments, hello children, from the Board of Education at this point. I'm gonna start on my right. Mrs. Reed, you want to share anything?
So am I doing, are we doing?
We're doing comments, so if you want to do a little bit of your committee report.
Okay, great.
Liaison report.
Okay. So as I stated in previous meetings, since I've gotten up the big chair, I've kind of reduced my appearances in district, but what if we, I'll be attending concerts really soon, so next week, I mean, we've, we're in full swing with holiday concerts. I'll be at Plaza next week. I think I'm gonna try to make the middle school sixth grade concert this week. And, and also the liaison, the legislative liaison, and really kind of, it's a little early in terms of what is coming down the pike, but there is talk around teacher evaluation, APPR, the foundation aid formula and looking into that as well. Again, it's, things haven't been formalized, you have to kind of wait for Mr. Cuomo to say what he's going to say and we'll figure out what we're going to do collectively in response to that, so. And, I don't know, I don't really have much today. Happy holidays and I'll pass the mic to my colleague.
It's gonna be a quiet one. Outside of the holiday concerts, I feel like we've all been to everything and you gave a great report, so I don't have anything to report.
Okay.
Not tonight.
Not tonight. Mrs. Coles?
I'm so short, I have to pull it all the way over here. Okay, I have attended concerts at the middle school, the high school, and Steele School. Next week, I will also be at Plaza. It's so wonderful to see our amazing students, they are so incredibly talented, right from kindergarten all the way up, so that's been a pleasure, certainly gets you in the holiday spirit. And I am the liaison for the council of PTAs in our district, so every month, their meeting gives an opportunity for all of the individual schools in our district to come together and kind of report on, on the exciting things and the things going on in their schools. So just a few things I made note of. The seventh grade honor students participated in a field trip to the DNA Learning Center in Cold Spring Harbor. While there, they performed two activities involving DNA. One was a gel electrophosaurus, which allowed them to compare different DNA samples and identify similarities and differences. The other involved adding the gene that causes jellyfish to glow into bacteria to make the bacteria glow. What an incredible way to pique their interest and, and really get kids not only loving science but maybe thinking about career paths. The AP Biology students participated in a very similar DNA trip but to late success. While there, they performed two activities, the same type of activities. They inserted the DNA into bacteria to make the bacteria glow. They were able to tour the lab also, which is not open to the public. They viewed the processing and testing of human blood samples. Again, a great way to maybe segue some of these young adults into what they'd like to do. And just now, in the holiday season, collections were made and supermarket gift cards were distributed to Baldwin families by the social workers throughout the district. At the high school, the Key Club collected over 100 bags of groceries at the supermarket sweep that was delivered to St. Christopher's pantry. At Steele School, Mr. Gooding and the student council raised $439 through their coin drive and that also purchased items for the pantry at St. Christopher's. And Steele School will also be sponsoring Baldwin families for the holiday season. So of course, another example of our incredible students and staff and our wonderful caring community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Coles. Ms. Sagan?
My responsibility as a liaison is to the Health and Safety Committee and I'm always very, very pleased that they, it's a very wide-ranging conversation. Everything from, it was a report on the environmental surveys that have been done by our staff, by our buildings and ground staff, and that, that really plays into the quality, everything from the air quality to storage of toxic materials and many other things. To things like, there was a report of buses at the middle school that were idling too long, so someone went down to investigate that, to the fact that the district-wide safety plan is on the website so that everyone in the community can be aware that there is a structured safety plan in place. We talked about the fact that a reminder of the emergency drills that are scheduled every year, how many of them we need to have, how many have to be done by December. So it's, it's really a very wide-ranging conversation and there are representatives on the committee from the community, from the teachers, as well as nurses and building administrators. So it's, it really is a great committee. In addition to that, I too attended concerts and they, each and every one were, was wonderful. I mean, they, kids are enormously talented. But I also, this week, attended the School Business Partnership. We had students at the high school talking about the opportunities that they've had to shadow professionals, to go to area businesses, the universities, the Northwell Health, we have a partnership with them. And the students that participated spoke themselves about what their experience has been, had been. And those of us who were there were just blown away by how well-spoken, how, and how grateful and appreciative they were for the opportunity to visit businesses and how that plays into, as Mrs. Coles was saying, the decisions that they make as far as their careers are concerned. And one of the things that they announced that we were just like, this is only the second year that we have had a.
Mock trial.
Trial. Team. And last year, and that, I know this probably sounds very snooty, but this is something that really the best schools go for that. That's a very sophisticated level of competition for, for students. And we jumped in, thanks to our own staff. The kids jumped in last year and did extraordinarily well for, for newbies to this competition. And the young woman who spoke about, after last year, she said, "We're gonna win this." And she went down, I repeated this to any number of people, she went down to the library on.